All right, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. It is Thursday 7:00 p.m., September 24th. We're at the Milton Community Center today and we're really excited about this because now we finally get to be together and have a meeting. And those following us on Zoom really appreciate you joining in as well. All right, first thing we have in the agenda is the House of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Mr. Akari to lead us in that.
I am here to testify in the United States of America, in every republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a couple announcements first. As most of you are aware, I was not in attendance for our last meeting on August 27th for the zoning board, however, I fully up the speed on the actions that we have before us tonight. Thank you. Thank you for J.D. filling in on the board, so we had a full forum last time. He is going to be also filling in tonight as Pat Fawn is unable to attend. If you want to make a comment during the public comments section, please use the hand raised or obviously if you're in attendance, let me know that as well. Just have to state your name and address and say your comments in three minutes or less. We ask that you just have a little patience as we obviously have a couple different forms of communication going on here. Please keep in mind that we do have three public hearings going on tonight, which we have on 3763 Lewis Road, we have 1073 Middle Line Road, and 434 Sodeman Road. If you'd like to speak again on either of those, just hold off until those public hearings and then we can speak at those. Okay, next on the agenda is the meeting minutes approval for August 27, 2020. Do we have any comments or modifications to those?
Yes, we're on page two of the... Mr. Tui, it says that it's corner of Country Club Drive and Walston Avenue. That's incorrect. It should read Country Club Drive and Route 67.
Okay. Any other modifications, changes, or comments? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes as modified? Chair?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. Second.
I have the role, please. Mr. Akari? Mr. Phil, it's on here. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Smaznow?
Yeah.
Chairwoman Soden? I'm going to have to stay since I was not here. Okay, next up is the public comments section. And as I stated, you're able to speak for your three minutes if you'd like to. So it's now open at any point. Anyone online obviously can also raise their hand and make a comment. Okay, I do not see anyone raising their hand or wanting to comment this time, so I'm going to close out the public hearing. Okay, next on the agenda is the official public hearing for the area variance of Ronald and Sharon Holds, or Holds, making sure I say the last name. 3763 Lewis Road, 188 point dash one dash 116. This is the public hearing for the area variance to add a two-room 24-foot by 24-foot addition to the rear of the dwelling. The rooms will be utilized as office and rec playroom for the children. I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to speak in regards to this variance, just overview of the nature of the variance as well as specifically what is the relief that you are seeking. So it looks like Sharon, I have you. I'm going to allow you to speak. So I have to move that, right? Hold on just a second. I'm going to increase my volume here, so hopefully this will help. All right, Sharon, try it again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, excellent. Thank you.
Oh, maybe loud, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. No, fine, go ahead.
My daughter lives at 3763 with her husband and two children. And they are a little bit cramped in there. And so they wanted, my son-in-law owns his own business, he needs office space. And they'd like to use the other part of that addition for the kids to have more space to move around and play. The problem we're having is the lot's kind of an odd configuration. To the right, we have electrical and electrical lines coming in underground. And to the other side of the building, we have a well. The front, we don't have enough room. There's an easement driveway that comes through there. So our only option is to go on the rear of the building. And we don't have enough room. We are efficient by, I think, about 62 feet for the setbacks. It's a wooded lot. Our neighbors are richer than Diane Yeager. They have no problem with our being that close to the line. So we're respectfully requesting a variance so we can go ahead and do this.
Okay, so just to be clear, we're looking at a rear setback variance.
Yes, yes.
And that's a 62-foot relief. Is that correct?
A pro, I mean, as close as I can get it. It may be off of co-ledgeance, but that's about as close as it gets. We are going to get it surveyed, you know, and have the actual addition we've got the plans and have it set up there. But it's pretty close to 62.
Okay.
We found the pins and all that, so.
Okay, great. All right. Would anyone like to speak from the public in regards to this public hearing? Does the board have any questions, comments, anything further to ask?
I would just say as long as that's a firm number.
The 62 feet.
62 feet's a firm number, so we don't have a problem with that.
Okay, Bill, can you speak to that?
Madam Chair, there in the R2, which imposes 75-foot rear setback to the structure, obviously she's asking for a very large... She has a deficiency of 62 feet, asking for that variance of 62 feet. She has plenty of property around her, but she is constrained, as she said, by a well, utilities, and a garage on the front left-hand side of the home and on the right-hand side of the home, as she stated, a well. Her neighbors, there's a wooded lot that's directly behind it, as she stated, that acts as a buffer to her neighbors. And again, it's just a rear setback in the R2 that she's asking for significantly from.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no additional comments or questions on this, I'd like to get a motion to approve the variance of the 62-foot relief for this action on 3763 Lewis Road. Actually, let me just close the public hearing first at this point. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Akari?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Smaznow?
Yes.
Chairwoman Soden? Okay, and just to go back, can I get a motion to approve this variance on 3763 Lewis Road as stated in the application?
I'll make the motion for the 62-foot setback.
Oh, second.
Mr. Akari?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Smaznow?
Yeah.
Chairwoman Soden?
Yes.
Sharon, congratulations and thank you for your work and we appreciate you coming before us.
Okay, hi, thank you all for your questions.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have a public hearing. Let's see, actually, let me look at the time for this. Piven, can you verify what time the public hearing is scheduled for?
7:15.
All right, we got you right on time. Very good. All right, so next up, we have a public hearing for the area variance, six in Stones Holding, which is Stuart Thomas, 1073 Middle Line Road, 176.1 dash 1 dash 23.2. So this here is a public hearing for the area variance for a new residential construction in a lot that's less than five acres in the R2 district. There are five adjoining properties that are also less than five acres. These lots were created prior to the zoning changes requiring a five-acre minimum per lot in the R2 district. I'd like to give the applicant opportunity to speak in regards to this and just get the exact relief, what you're requesting, and just the nature of the variance.
Hello?
Hi there. Stuart.
Are you on the phone?
Go ahead.
Yes.
All right, if you could just give us a little overview of the variance and exactly what the relief is you're requesting, that would be great.
Well, the relief I'm seeking is 1.986 acres. I'm not asking for any setbacks relief because they're okay. So it's basically a literally pre-existing lot, as you said, and I'm just asking the relief to accommodate the zoning changes.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions from the public in regards to this? Karen? Come on up.
Great. Hopefully you'll be able to hear me. I had a little issue last night. Anyway, good evening. My name is Karen Stulters. I'm the Town of Milton historian and chairperson of the Historic Structures and Places Committee for the Town of Milton. Last week, the Historic Structures and Places Committee for the town met and this property was discussed as it has a cemetery on it. At the last zoning board meeting, I raised some concerns and Mr. Thomas asked me to call him and I did. He is calling the cemetery, area grave markers and not a cemetery. The town has recognized this as a cemetery since before 1878, as this cemetery is not a family burial ground. It's made up of several families and we recognize that as a cemetery. It was used by people who lived in the immediate area, as you can see in the history that was sent. The board has a copy of the names and the burial dates and knows buried there as well as a copy of the history that comes from this textbook that was, that just came out this spring, where Kim McCartney, my predecessor, went and did the history of every cemetery in the town, including all the families that, you know, a lot of genealogy is in here as well, as far as why these people were buried there, because they had mills very close by, and that's why they're buried there in that particular cemetery. The first burial was in 1797 and the last one was in 1881, according to this history. And the committee feels strongly that it needs to be protected. And looking at the survey map showing the stones, our records only have eight of the 11 stones recorded. In the conversation about this with Mr. Thomas, he suggested I email him so he could share my concerns with his partners, of which I did. The board also has a copy of this as well. Being there are three stones we don't know about, our committee would like to do an inventory of all the stones and take pictures of all of them individually for our town records. Permission to do this was asked for in the email. I also suggested in the email that a fence be put around the cemetery for protection. This has been done with several other old cemeteries in the town when a new owner takes over. Most are happy to do it. The board and Mr. Thomas have a copy of the town's zoning code that relates to cemeteries. This mentions the 50-foot distance from the cemetery to the nearest building and providing an enclosure, a fence, as listed in Section 3. What would be ideal is to have a three-foot easement off of Circle C Road to the cemetery so the cemetery of need be. This also is mentioned in Section 2 of the code. The committee also had concern about how close the proposed house might be to the cemetery. Having the home at least 50 feet satisfies the code, but that's still pretty close. Our hope is that the new homeowner would center the house on the property, leaving more distance between the cemetery and the house. Mr. Thomas shared that the location of the house could change. So the Historic Structures and Places Committee is asking three things. Can an inventory be done of all stones with pictures? And that a fence be erected to protect the cemetery? And an easement of three feet from Circle C Road be granted for future access to the cemetery? These items could be used as a condition of approval by the zoning board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Do I have any other public comment? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Akari?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Smaznow?
Yeah.
Chairwoman Soden? Okay. Does the board have any questions, comments, deliberation on this? Obviously, there's a couple moving parts on this. J.D.?
Yeah, I have a question of the circumference of the fence that would enclose, that you're suggesting.
I believe.
I had a question about the circumference of the fence that would be needed to enclose the 11 grave sites. If someone could answer that.
I don't know the exact distance that it would, because it's not terribly wide, but it's more long than it is wide. I don't know the distance, because I don't have the map in front of me. And a map could actually show you a little bit better.
May I, do you actually have the footage? Okay, thank you.
It would probably take three quarters of the depth of the lot.
Three quarters?
I would say maybe two-thirds to three-quarters. You go from the road, Middle Line Road, back to the deck property home. And I'm not sure how much distance is in that setback. Do you know, Bill?
Well, the setback that he has imposed.
Yeah, can you find that? Here we go.
The setback that he has imposed on the map that's on Zoom right now is 50 foot. You'll see the 50-foot imposed setback line. So the most of the graves, not all of the graves are on this gentleman's property. There are three that are on another parcel, as you can see, to the west of the parcel. So I'm assuming with the 50-foot marker that he has laid out here, it would probably be about 100 foot in depth and then whatever the width that was agreed upon by the town
Yeah, I think I had.
1842 six, C is the charge. Section of some areas that are going.
Can you attach the...
Yeah.
On the side? Does everyone see that, the section of the code that it's located in?
Basically, everybody on the board knows what he has, what he's asking for is already a five-acre, it's a five-acre minimum in R2. And he's asking for the one point, whatever the...
968.
One point, I'd say acres of relief for his zoning request. And then the cemetery thing came into play with the historic structures.
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions.
Use your mic. Thank you.
It's first time, right? What I'd like to see, I guess this is for the applicant, is an agreement, you know, I don't think somebody, you know, I take people's words for them, but some sort of agreement where I think our part, I'm not sure who takes care of these things, but one, the width of the easement to get there. Who's going to, I imagine he would be the one filing it. In addition, so there's no, nothing incurred by the town for that in terms of cost. The other thing is, is that the distance from the outside of a grave stone or a grave to the fence should be determined also for ease of maintenance. And that should be spelled out and agreed to before we go any further. I think that's really important, as someone who used to have to do that work. I know that down the road, if it's spelled out, it's going to make it a lot easier for whoever has to maintain these things. And, you know, the width of the easement, I think, is important too, just so they can get in and make sure that that's not going to get blocked, you know, in the future. I don't think you have to bring any heavy equipment in there. It's not that big an area, but something where it's going to make it easy for the town to maintain and won't impose undue cost to the town. That should be considered and spelled out.
Now, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the code, it looked to me when I was reading it, that it only has an enclosure piece of it, as far as like a fence or something around it. I did not see anything about an easement to the location or like even work that would need to be done, for instance, you know, stones or anything like that, you know, clearing, that sort of thing.
The town would need access to maintain the property, therefore the easement would come into play. They would need to get mowers and a three-foot easement would be kind of slight. I think it would have to be larger to get a tractor or whatever equipment needed to get back to the site. And again, that would, that would be a legal issue. I'd have to defer to Bill. I don't know much about the, in our code, how we'd go about addressing that.
Yes, oh, click it up.
Never been a rock star. I just, I had a question for Ms. Stulters. I think what you're referring to is the section in the code that relates to subdivision, and that section contemplates public access to a public cemetery. And I appreciate the other sections, but that's the one that contemplates the public access. That's the concept that you're thinking about, if I follow it. And the question that I have in that regard, that section provides public access to the cemetery or burial ground from a public street, set access to be a minimum of, but it's 30 feet wide unless a separate public access exists on the property or adjoining property. But that exists in the subdivision.
That's in the subdivision.
Section. But that's where you get, as I take it, the concept of the public access, where if we were a planning board and the board were subdividing the land, it would be to preserve public access from the public way. And the follow-up question that I have for this board's information is, do you by any chance know, has anyone contacted SHPO in connection with this site and gotten any response at this point? And that may also be an appropriate question for the applicant. Sorry.
What is SHPO?
State Office of Historic Preservation.
Oh, okay.
And if I understood you correctly, is it that the mapping as it stands now, its current status, is that it's, to your way of thinking, incomplete? Is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Because we haven't been able to get in there in 20, 30 years to actually see the stones. And that's why we would like to inventory what's there. One of the reasons.
Before we move on, Stuart, I'd like to understand from your perspective, let me put the mic back here, kind of what your thoughts were, I guess, on the emails that you received from Karen and in regards to the cemetery and the easement, the fencing, that sort of thing.
Well, the issue is, is I, I'm a partner, there's other people in the states and still holding. Some new things have come to light tonight that I had not been made aware of. I've been very, you know, interested in proceeding with Karen as best I can. Karen and I spoke last week and I expect we'll continue to talk. My understanding of what is there is a private grave markers on private land. And I think, is it, Bill, the attorney?
Yes.
Is absolutely correct that one subsection of 180 dash 42, Section C, is about site plan review, which is about establishing a business. The little detail that's missing is when I bought this property and I cannot find any deed that has, that meets and bounds of a cemetery. So what happens is this is just grave markers on private land. The things that she's talking about is a municipal cemetery, which in fact, according to New York, they say, oh, if you don't take care of it for 25 years, then it becomes abandoned and then that's a whole different thing. So the truth of the matter is, is that there has been no one buried there for 139 years. According to Kim in her article, the kid in her article, she actually says that it's been abandoned and disrepaired and it's on private land. So I understand the conversation and I understand that some of you guys are going down the municipal route and it's just not what it is. And I, I'm sorry to tell you that, but on the other hand, I'm more than happy to continue to talk to Karen and even if I come to the historical group and we can come up with some different... I come to the historical group and we can come up with some different ideas or solutions. But at this point, I don't have a problem working on that, but I do have a problem if the zoning board appeals decides that this is gonna hold up my application because I don't have something I don't need to do to get permission, as I'm sure you guys will see.
Okay.
I'd like to answer that.
Yeah, Eric, go ahead.
My name's Eric. Regardless of the category of the cemetery, is it in the town's interest to preserve something historical? That's one side. You and your partners want to build on a lot that is not a buildable lot at this point? I would suggest you talk to your partners. It is the zoning board's purview to see that this is remedied prior to, at least in my mind. Before we, I want to keep the public hearing open, I would suggest that, and I think you've got some homework to do. That's up to you.
But you're still thinking that this is a municipal cemetery, but it's not.
That's irrelevant to me.
Pardon?
That is irrelevant to me, from a historical standpoint.
Well, I understand it's irrelevant to you, but that's not what the law says, okay?
Okay, well, that's fine. You want to go for a vote now?
This is not law under 291, which is the public cemetery definition in your town definition.
Let me bring up the definition of cemetery.
I think I can just cut to the chase. The simple answer is, there is a definition of a public cemetery, and that's under section 291 of the town law. But if you listen to Mr. Smazinow, what he's really saying to you is that your site contains some circumstances that are historically significant and perhaps otherwise significant. And if you, if you look in the code, the code actually makes a distinction where it provides for both public cemeteries and then cemeteries. I believe Mr. Smazinow is referring to a cemetery. And I don't think you would disagree, sir, that by definition, from what we've heard tonight, the land that you've got fits within the definition of the code as a defined cemetery, and that is that the land is set apart or used as a place for the internment of the dead, or in which human bodies have been buried, and may include facilities for storing ashes of human remains that have been cremated, or the internment of the dead in sealed crypts or compartments, but may not include a structure for the purpose of the cremation of human remains. A cemetery may be a cemetery corporation, operated by a private not-for-profit or religious institution, operating in compliance with the state law. But I think at the end of the day, you would agree that your property contains conditions that fit within the definition of cemetery as it's defined in the town code.
Well, I'm not gonna agree or disagree, other than this. I believe that there is something there that has to be addressed. Our initial reaction was that we were not gonna disturb them, and that if anything was built on a flat land, which is a proposed thing, that the, that the sites would be preserved and we wouldn't touch them. Having said that, Bill is the guy who handles any building permit, and he has told me several times that it has to be a minimum of 50 feet from the stones. And I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not quite convinced that, that this is a reason not to grant me a reasonable variance, and that this is something that needs to be continued to go on. I'm willing to have that discussion and try to find something that makes sense, but for you to not do your jobs for a reasonable application because of something else, I'm not quite sure that that makes sense to me. I have no problem cooperating to find a solution, but, you know, that's something we have to do. I personally, I personally would like to see them not touched and not anything done to them. I don't know if that's good enough. I do not believe it should be turned into a municipal cemetery, because that steps on people's private rights to, to do what they want with their property. One of the issues here, which is kind of interesting, and I've had this conversation with Karen and Bill, under New York State law, you can put a grave anywhere you want, on any property you want, basically in the town middle, as long as you feel, take care of the groundwater and DEP. In fact, under the paragraph of 1842, it says number four, all bearers are undertaken strictly according to the application regulation, New York State Department of Health and Environmental Conservation, as well as New York State, according to New York State Cemetery Division, there is no laws or regulations covering burial plots or sites that are on private property. There are no New York State laws or regulations against a private owner removing headstones and using the property for any use other than, any use that suits the owner. I'm not looking to do any of that. What I'm trying to tell you is, I understand the path you've been down, I wanted to operate, but I don't think that that changes my request tonight. And I don't think that making me spend more money to put something on the survey when I've already put the tombstones on the survey makes sense to me. And I apologize if I'm long-winded, but I am just seeking the relief created by a legal law. This is, if I wanted to, I probably would build on it today according to Bill, because I don't need to accept those, but I'm trying to do the right thing here, right? So I appreciate what you're saying. I will continue to work with Karen, come up with some ideas and see what makes sense. But it's not, one side fits all.
Stuart, I'd like to just to address that comment.
Yes, Stuart, you have a pre-existing lot of record with existing structure on it. It does not conform to our code regulations. You could rebuild the current house you have, but you could not build without the zoning board approval, with a five acre relief. So I just wanted to clarify that, saying that you could just don't, you couldn't build without this variance. Without, you could fix the existing home that you have and move in, that's fine, with a building permit. But you cannot put a new structure on that property without this variance.
Mr. Lewis, just for clarification, is that the 1988 double Y that's there now?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay. So it sounds like we've got a couple different things going on with this. Obviously, Stuart came for us for relief at 1.96 acres. However, the cemetery issue has come to light, it does fit the definition in our code of cemetery, so we really need to address this prior to moving forward. I'd like to, I'd like to propose, I'd like to propose that we keep, we keep this on the agenda until next month. I'd like you to talk to your partners, understand their perspective on it before we move forward, because I feel like we're sort of at a little bit of an impasse here with how it stands, and we don't want to make a snap decision and it impact you adversely.
But there's a lot of other issue here. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
As Bill pointed out earlier, there are three grave markers that are on someone else's property, so now there's another property owner involved.
Yes.
If I can clarify that for you, that may be fine, but that doesn't pertain to your application. As I understand the matter before the board currently, the direction of the chairwoman is that the board is seeking that you map the stones that are on your property, so that this board understands what the conditions there are there on your site that is the subject of the application. Now, if you choose to come forward and provide additional information that you believe is helpful, that would be fine. The other part of it is, I think the board's interested in finding out whether or not you have contacted SHPO, and I think that the board may have an interest in asking you to do so, so that the board can find out the State Office of Historic Preservation's position on this.
Oh, my other thing that I would say is, if you take a look at the survey map, you have all the tombstones marked on it. The other thing that you're talking about also is the issue of meets and bounds, and there is no meets and bounds for where these graves are. So when you deal with the meets and bounds issue, there is no title in property other than all of it.
All right. I think, I think we need to take a little time, as Bill has kind of stated, and, you know, map out those stones, speak with your owners, contact SHPO, understand their position.
Stones are mapped out.
Okay, all right.
The stone farm mapped out, they have a survey of it, so that's an issue.
Okay. All right. Yep, so speak to your owner, or speak to your other, the other owners, and as well as contact SHPO and see what their position is on this, because at this point, we need to understand what that is before we move forward on the application. So we will, we will talk again on October 22nd at that meeting, and understand kind of what, where you came to on that.
So what information do you want? I'm not sure what you're saying.
Okay, you indicated that you hadn't talked to the other owners of, of your, your company, so that, that needs to happen. In addition to that, we need to understand the stance of the State Office of Historic Preservation as well, understand what their stance is on it, because I think it's pretty clear in our code what, what needs to happen as far as the fencing and that sort of thing. So if they indicate something different, I'd like to understand that and hear, hear what they have to say.
All right, well, if Bill would give some homework to find out the fact that it has no meets and bounds, and it's on private property, that would be important also, I think.
Karen, you want to say something else?
It's, it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that once a cemetery has been abandoned for three years, it becomes part of the municipality. So that might be worthy of checking into as well, because the, that, the last burial was in 1881, that's more than 100 years ago. So it could, who's gonna be the one to own the title to that, is the big, I think, a big question. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, so more to come next, next month on this, October 27th, or 22nd, excuse me, as I stated. So Stuart, we will, we will talk more in regards to this next, next month.
Okay, would you have Karen to help?
Sure can. Yep, she's right here, so I will let her know if you want to talk. All right, thank you. Okay. As we stated, we will, we will talk more on that one next month, once we get some additional information on that. Okay, so 7:30, we're at the time. So next on the agenda is the public hearing for area variance for Active Solar, which is 434 Sodeman Road. I'm not sure the code is correct on this, but dash 1631 dash 1 dash 56.11. This is the public hearing for the area variance of 434 Sodeman Road. They are seeking a variance for the coverage requirement to increase from 10% to 15.84% of 5.84% relief. At the beginning of September, a couple of us from zoning and planning had the opportunity to actually go and view the site and where that would kind of lay as far as the solar farm. Eric, did you want to say your impressions or say anything in regards to that? I know that.
I'm gonna keep the mic for a minute. Just, just point, point out that I'm gonna recuse myself from this matter, step down politely.
Bye. Yeah. Megan and I were there from zoning, and it was, it was good to walk the property, to see, right now there's metal recycling on the property, you can see that there, this is not a shoddy place. You can see everything was organized and well, well done. The area that we walked through was in good form. Presentation was done well. I think we could understand why they need more with northern slopes. And as far as the layout and roads and things like that, would be that the planning, so that's really not our purview. But other than that, I think that, that was my impression anyway, was that, I don't think anybody's gonna be able to see this from the road or anything else. What was the other?
I'd like to give the applicant's representative a chance to just kind of tell us, you know, a little bit, a little bit about it. Obviously, we kind of know what the relief is, but, you know, just state that as well, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Ryan Farming with Creighton Manning Engineering, and on behalf of Active Solar Development, we are asking for an area variance for the Sodeman Solar Farm. With me tonight is Franklin Cunningham with Active Solar, and we'll be able to answer any questions that you have, and we appreciate you taking the time to consider our application. Just as a brief reminder, the Sodeman Road Solar Farm is proposed to be located at 434 Sodeman Road, just north of the intersection of Murray Road and New York 29. As Eric stated, it's behind the Metro Metal Recycling Facility, which is owned by AMC Realty of Saratoga, and the panels will be primarily open land, that's back there. The parcel is located in a R2 zoning district, and this is a 46.97 acres in size, and the panels will be ground mounted, and the site will generate approximately 6.7 megawatts of electricity. The site itself consists of the panels, the equipment pads, the electric equipment, and gravel access roads, all enclosed within a chain link fence, and that total enclosed area is approximately 23.1 acres. In accordance with town code for solar farms, this proposed solar farm meets all requirements for this zoning district, the minimum property size, the equipment setback, however, with one exception, the density requirement of the equipment, which cannot cover more than 10% of the property. As proved, the area variance is for a relief of 5.84% to increase to 15.4. The small degree of relief we are seeking will cause no detrimental impacts to the health. health, safety, and welfare of the neighbors. There are low impacts to auditory visual after construction, limited wildlife impacts. For the neighbors, the property, or the surrounding neighbors consist primarily of wooded areas, and so the screening is not, no one is going to see the panels. And in the safety, there's a dent surrounded by the entire parcel. Some of the benefits for the project would be environmental. There would be a reduction of fossil fuels. There would be some community benefit in terms of local source of electricity, and since it's community solar, they have an opportunity to lower the cost of their electrical bills. Primary reason for relief is the combination of different factors for the parcel. Due to the orientation of the parcel, which is longer than wider, in addition to, considering then the 100-foot setback to the equipment, there's wetlands on the site, and there's a national grided property right in the center of this parcel. So combining all those together, the plan we showed before you maximizes the panels in the north-south orientation as best as possible. And so what, if we were, the relief would just, if we were not getting a reduction of panels, which would fully utilize the site as best ability. That's all I have. I appreciate, we appreciate your consideration. Frank, do you want to add anything?
So my name is Frank McCallum with Active Solar. I wanted to address a couple things. One, yes, there's wetlands, there's a negative slope, there's a utility use, and primarily it's, there's a negative slope on the property. And when we say negative slope, meaning it pitches from south to north, which then makes us have to spread our panel down so one doesn't hit the other. And that's primarily the reason. So as we look at the cost of the project and the output of it, that's why we're seeking relief on top of the other things. I think as you think about uses for this property, it's, as I said in the last meeting, it's permitted as a 40-some acre recycling facility. So I think this is a much quieter use for that back portion of the property. You know, if you look at what the Milton, the Murray Road side across the street, we're there four times a year, mowing the lawn, once a year for electrical maintenance, we're pretty quiet neighbors. So yes, you'll have about a six-month construction period, but assuming meetings go the way they do, that'll happen in the winter, and we should be out of there by the spring. So Mr. Sladnow had a comment about the PSC last time, I just want to address, I said I'd back them on it. So I printed out the 2017 New York PSC meter order, which establishes the rate for all solar. And I only printed out the first 18 pages of the 247-page document, just to save this off in paper. I have it on Zebra, which I'll give to you. Page 18 deals specifically with, can I call you Eric? Sure. With Eric's question, which was what's the ratepayer impact of solar, not only this type, but solar. And there was a cap put on in this tariff design. So the tariff is designed to have an actual rate cap. So on page 18 of this, it says, managing potential impacts on nonparticipants, meaning people who don't have solar. To manage the potential impacts of the meter phase one tariff on nonparticipants, incremental net annual revenue impact of approximately 2% for each utility will be established for all projects interconnected after the date of the solar. The 2% upper balance will not result in a hard cap, but instead is used to design capacity-based allocations for mass market and CDG projects. We are a CDG project, Community District Generation. So the design is 2% impact. The other thing I want to give you, and this was 2017, so in 2017, the credit value of a kilowatt hour from a solar, a community solar system was roughly 10 cents, like 9.8 cents. So 2% of that would be 0.2 of a penny, right? So since then, we've lost roughly 50% of one of the components of that, they call it the value standard, the value of distributed energy credit. So we've lost 50% of the demand reduction value, and this is from National Grid's latest tariff on it. And we've lost 2.2 cents of community credit, and then another 2.8 cents of market transition credit. The market transition credit was meant to kind of transition away from this being subsidized by non-reparers, repairs. So it's gone down from 2%. The latest, the PSC has tried to do a study, which they haven't finished, and discussed this, as to what the real ratepayer impacts are. But if you take that 2% and think about a 10-cent credit, and the angle, an average house using 10,000 kilowatt hours a year, say a 2,500 square foot house, it equates to about $12 a year. So if you do the math on that. So it's a buck a month is really the ratepayer impact, and that's at full value. We've gone down since then. So I just wanted to answer your question. That's the best I can quantify it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So... Is everybody clear what he's talking about? Maybe I could rephrase it just so that you know.
Yes.
It'd be in the minutes. Basically, what we're saying, my biggest question was, so we put in this solar, and is that going to affect the people in the county as far as will they have to pay more for electricity? And I think basically what you said is, is that for the forward-looking, let's call it that, of less emissions, everybody in the town might have a dollar added to their electricity. Is that pretty much what we're saying?
On a monthly basis. And the other thing to think about is regardless of whether we do this or not, they've already allocated the money, so we're all paying that bill.
Yeah, I get it, but at least my thinking was, as a board member, to sort of, everybody knows, is if we're going to grant relief for this, I mean, they might go to another town, we'd still be paying it, but at least everybody knows. I don't, yeah, you don't mind paying for something to, you know, make the air cleaner or whatever it happens to be if you know what the cost is, and now we do. So I thank you for that.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, would anyone from the public like to comment or question in regards to it? Now, the only question I had was the 10% to the 15.84%, which is the 5.84% relief. What are we talking about as far as acreage? What does that equate to?
So what we're looking at is just the panel, the panel itself, and with all of them, it's about 7.43 acres.
So when Milton defines ground covered ratio, it is the area that the panel is covered. So in between the rows is not considered structure. So when we do our analysis, we look at it from above, and we take, if you put it in a triangle, we take the bottom leg of the triangle, not the hypotenuse, and multiply that by the amount of panels, and then we give you ground coverage ratio.
Just to let everyone know, we are going to be keeping open the public hearing on this. It is a coordinated review with the planning board. So since our last meeting event with John Barto, the chair of the planning board, and they'll be taking over as lead agent for Seeker, and it's been determined to be a type 1, so I'm sure you're probably aware of that, because they have a broader scope of review for this one. Therefore, the Seeker that we did last month will modify, since they'll be taking the lead on this, and they will be doing the Seeker review on their action on October 18th. So we're going to keep the public hearing open. If all goes well, and we're ready to do so, we'll close the public hearing out at our next meeting and resume further action on the variance. If things are still outstanding, obviously, we'll do what we need to do, extend what we need to extend as far as the public hearing goes. But I just wanted to make everyone kind of aware of the coordination going on there. Does the board have any questions, additional questions or comments? I guess from my perspective, if you're looking at, if you're looking at the property from the road straight on, it slopes down. So it slopes this, but it's a pretty significant slope. So at the bottom of that slope is wetland, and then it starts to gradually incline. But even at the highest point, because we actually walked nearly to the top part, you really can't even see the road at that point. So you probably will not be able to see any of the solar panels on that. And then the neighbors on either side, it's wooded, they're obviously aware of kind of what's going on with that anyway, but I just kind of want to give my perspective on that. So as I said, we'll resume next month. You know, obviously, we'll know what's going on, we'll know what's going on, and you know, we'll continue our discussions at that point, okay?
Thank you, very done. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Jim Craig wanted me to just point out too, and I'm sure Planning Board will also state this as well, and I'll read it because you probably know better than me what it actually means, but you should start the pilot, even in lieu of taxes, agreement in place by contact with supervisor, town attorney. Realistically, cannot work on the final figures until Phil Grant or denies a variance, as we won't know the wattage of the facility, but we just wanted to kind of point that out about the pilot.
I never remember too. Another public benefit, we've offered $100,000 to the town bill as a public benefit, helping whatever they feel they need for. The pilot, we would expect we'd just follow the same framework we used on the last project, so I expect that will go forward.
Great, thank you. Okay, on there we go. I don't think so. Do we need to make a motion? All right, we'll just leave that open. Okay, last on the agenda here is an area variance application review for 11-year sealed place, Richard and Denise Swa... Swa... Swalen, okay. This is an area variance to construct a 14-by-25 foot, and the application said carport, but it's really an accessory structure at 11-year thick place. They're seeking a 15-foot side setback relief from the 20-foot permanent side setback to 5-foot side setback. So I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to talk, so if you want to come up to the mic and just kind of give us, I know that you sent some pictures, so we all have those to look at. You don't have to say anything long-winded or anything. Not really prepared, huh? Yes, no, go ahead.
Yeah, it's in the R1 district, is an accessory structure with a side setback. It with accessory structure, 1750 square feet, which I believe this structure is, only needs a 10-foot side setback in the property, so they're asking for 5-foot of relief.
Okay.
For a various, for a sealed building up, put our cars in there, that's all. So right now, there's trees in place that we can't really move this any other way. We've already talked to our neighbor closest to that, she said there's no problem at all. So we're hoping the driveway that we just put steel building there, it's not curving and cool if necessary, but there will be steel buildings for our couple cars in there.
Yeah, we just want to house two cars in there, there's not going to be any electricity in there, there's not going to be any plumbing or water or anything. We have a 65-foot hangar and an 05-foot hangar, and one put in there for the winter.
I think you should put a lot.
Well, it's just going to be stored because we're not going to drive it anymore.
Or a bolt, something like that, yeah.
So just looking for 5 feet. Okay, great. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to make a comment? Actually, no, I'm sorry. I'm ahead myself already.
No graves there at all.
All right, so everyone has the pictures, thank you, I appreciate that. That was helpful though, kind of visualize, I just wanted to sneak that in the backyard. We didn't go on that, because we were to go back, there's trees, if we go to the side, there's trees and roots and stuff. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, does the board view the application, when looking at it, is the application complete? Are there any things that you have questions or need to be, have some further clarity on that?
Question 12 on the application is an answer.
Okay, let's see. Is the proposed action located in an archeological sensitive area?
Not.
I'm going to say no on that one. All right, do you mark your copy? Did I mark my copy?
No, I mean, no, I'm not.
Okay, anything else from the application point of view? No? Okay. Okay, Bill. I'm just going to change that, the application where it says 20 to 10.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Next, I need to get a motion to declare the CBA as the lead agent for the Seeker and classify this as a type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is Seeker, which is exempt from further environmental review.
I'll make that motion. I think this is a class 2 action, and do the Seeker as a lead agency. I'll second that.
Mr. Akari?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Sladnow?
Yes.
Chair Lee Sodin? Yes. Okay, excellent. And then next, I'd like to set a public hearing date for this, for October 22nd at So that will be the first, the first thing, not wait till the end. If I can get a motion to do so, please.
I'll make the motion to set the public hearing for 7:05 on the 24th. 22nd, 22nd, excuse me.
Mr. Akari?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Sladnow?
Yes.
Chair Lee Sodin? Yes. I do not have any further announcements. Does anyone have anything to say?
I should be home.
Yes.
Yes, it is. Can I get the motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make the motion to adjourn. So, second.
Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.